And we are live on Facebook.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, March 16th. It is 6:02 PM, and we're going to begin this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. Trying to look to see who is with us this evening. I'm going to begin by giving the council the opportunity to vogue on holding this meeting electronically, and we will begin with reading this statement. Pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the March 16th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You may join the Zoom meeting, and you do need to join the Zoom meeting to participate at the link that you see on your screen. You can also find that link on our Facebook page and on our website, which is gallantntn.gov. You can also call in at 470-381-2552 or 470-250-9358. And if you call in, you will enter the webinar ID 863-3020-2276. With that, I will entertain a motion from the council.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion to hold the meeting electronically by Councilman Jimmy Overton, a second by Vice Mayor Sean Fennell. Any questions, discussion?
We do a roll call. We do a roll call also.
Yes, I'm going to ask that Ms. Alexander call the roll and take the vote to hold the meeting electronically. So when she calls your name, please indicate your or affirm your presence and vote yea or nay. Ms. Alexander?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Alexander. Councilman Alexander. Councilman Fan.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton.
Yes, and present.
Mayor, six eyes, zero nays.
Okay, and six in attendance. We will keep an eye out for Councilman Alexander. I have not heard that he won't be here this evening, so maybe he is just running late. Now, after we have the approval to hold the meeting electronically, I'm going to ask Nick Tuttle, our city engineer, to lead us in the invocation this evening. If you don't mind doing that for us, we would appreciate it.
Why don't you join us?
Yes, ma'am. Be happy to. If you will pray with me. We come before you this evening with Thanksgiving. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve. We know that we lead by serving in this capacity. Lord, I pray that as we lead tonight in this servant hood, God, we would do it using your wisdom, that you would speak and guide and direct all that we do as we make decisions for this great city. Lord, please speak to us and let us follow your will. We love you, and this is in Jesus's name. We do pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. And thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. You have the minutes before you from the February 16th, 2021 City Council meeting.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Love.
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman George. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask Ms. Alexander to call the roll for the vote on approving the minutes, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander. Still, I don't see him still. Okay. Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you so much. The minutes are approved. Now it's time for public recognition on agenda-related items. I want to let the public know that we do have three public hearings tonight. They're all related to the Twin Eagles Annexation Plan of Service and plan. So if you'd like to speak to that, you may wish to do that under one of those public hearings. Otherwise, you can speak to anything that's on this evening's agenda, and there is a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So we're going to open Public Recognition on Agenda-Related Items. Mr. Henshaw will guide us all through that. If you're calling in, you will use star nine to indicate that you wish to speak by raising your hand. If you're online with us, you'll use the raise your hand function at the lower part of your screen on the Zoom meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Henshaw for Public Recognition on Agenda-Related Items.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a couple of people who've raised their hand already. Beth Coons, go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself. If you mouse over the bottom of your screen, you'll see a mute button on the lower left if you're using a computer.
And I think I've got it.
I hate to interrupt, but I need to remind people too that you'll have five minutes to speak and that we need you to give us your name and address, please. And with that, Ms. King, may go ahead.
My name is Beth Coons. I live at 168 Aquinas Court here in Gallatin, Twin Eagles subdivision. I've spoken with three of the gentlemen prior to the first reading and expressed my dislike for this proposal. And I must say, when I left that meeting, I don't know if they had already read it or not, but it was a week or two prior to the meeting, the first meeting where it was brought up. And I could tell from the conversation that they were not interested in what was being said, because there are a lot of us here in Twin Eagles who are against this proposal. The builder keeps expanding and expanding. And yes, I know we need another road. That should have been in the original planning of this subdivision for exit and entrance here. But, you know, they keep allowing him to annex more into the city under the guise of by building better homes. Some people do want homes with large lots. And I don't think that Ron Jones is going to put in an inferior home. He wants to get the most he can for his money, and I understand that. And it's his right to build, but not necessarily to have it annexed into the city. This puts an additional burden on the city. There's going to have to be a new fire station built to cover all these homes, plus the development adjacent to us across from 109 that was recently brought up to the council. Not counting the schools and the road situation on Douglas Lane, which is hazardous at best today. I was on it today, so I do know how that road is, and it's poorly maintained anyway. It's a county road. You know, I appreciate the two dissenting votes that were issued last week by Councilwoman Love, and I believe the other gentleman was Mr. Hayes that voted against it. You know, we have a planning department here in the city of Gallatin, and they are against it and have voiced their opposition to this on more than one occasion. Yet, the county, the council overrides their decision, and I'm assuming they're engineers that work in the planning department. So I would hope that our representatives would that are over our area, Mr. Overton, and I know I spoke with Mr. Fennell a couple of weeks, several weeks ago, and I hope that you will take our thoughts into this process. You know, it can be built. Let it be built with county, you know, on county property. Doesn't have to, you know, we don't have the infrastructure here in Gallatin to support all these different proposals that are being placed. So I hope you'll consider what I had to say, and I appreciate your time in listening to me. And again, thank you.
Ask Al Jevon. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening all. Ask Al Jevon's 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I'm going to go to a subject who's linked to every annexation and every building was going to pop up in Gallatin. I would ask to ask Councilwoman George to recuse herself from every vote regarding to annexation of new building. Since she had been in the council at any meeting, she has talked as professional opinion, as a reactor. We had word like, we need more inventory as reactor. We don't have enough inventory. We need more inventory, and that's why this building needs to be approved and be right now. And it's not that just one occasion. It's at every meeting. And that's even if you go on her Facebook page, I'm in George Gallatin City Council District 2. When you click on her Facebook page, the first window will open, show real estate, choose an option, type your own message. Can I speak to an agent? What areas do you serve? Can I schedule a viewing? Are there any new properties available? It's clear that this is a clear conflict on her job as a councilwoman. She can she can get financial gain of that because of her position and her views on new buildings. She even at the last meeting complained that the floor plans were only two bedrooms and wanted three bedrooms for plan. That's a reactor remark. That's nothing to do with council, because we know that three bedroom floor plan sell easier, and that's contrary to Charter Division 1, Section 2.2. So I would appreciate if you look into that and if she could recuse herself. We met for the first time last weekend at Republican Meeting, and she recognized me when I talked, because until then, she never seen me, and she said that too. So I think she's a nice lady for what we had a decent conversation, but I think there there is an issue, and I need to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria?
Hello, council members. My name is Victoria Hagan. I live out here on 599 Douglas Lane, Gallatin, of course. I was looking at the city website today, just a little while ago, and I'm wondering how many of you have actually sat down and looked at the map of the city has on the website showing all the new planned developments coming up. I just looked at them all. There are 73 as of today that I just looked at less than an hour ago. I'm a little concerned with all the growth, of course, as other people are. In less than this three square mile of where I live, there's 1,115 homes at the Meadows. There's 2,250 on the Bowles property, 68 on Long Hollow where the church was going to be at the corner of 25 and 109, 100 townhomes being built at Cumberland Point, which is right on 25 there. Ryan Homes on 25. I'm not sure how many there are there, because it wasn't listed. And then the proposed 171 to Twin Eagles. When I add those numbers up, I come up to 4,070 homes. That is not including the Twin Eagles annexation. And all of those homes are going to be using the 25-109 intersection. That doesn't that has nothing to do with the additional traffic when Hatton Track is complete. I don't believe the roads are capable of handling all that. One of the other things I did, I spoke to my county council members. I spoke with Leslie Shell and Jerry Foster both today. They both reminded me that for three years in a row, we had a lady that lived out here on Douglas Lane, and she wanted to open a wedding venue. The county turned it down three years in a row because they did three different studies, three years in a row, three different traffic studies, and they found it to be too dangerous a road to allow traffic from a wedding venue. That would have been that probably would have happened over weekends, maybe Fridays and Saturdays, and you're talking about doing this on a daily basis. It's a dangerous road. We need you need fire protection out here. I don't believe 171 homes on 59 acres is what we should do. Mr. Jones does build a nice quality home, but he's trying to put too many homes on that piece of land. I believe if you leave it in the county, the county's going to allow him to build. The county's going to have to let him come out onto Douglas Lane. But in that respect, there's also going to be less homes with less traffic, less chance of accidents. I'm afraid now with the other, what's going to be built out here, the Meadows, the 1,327, when they're trying to come down 109, I'm afraid they're going to try to cut through Douglas Lane. I'm not sure if I lost you or not. Are we still there?
We hear you.
Okay. I'm not sure if they're going to try to cut through Douglas Lane, because at this point, I cut through Cambridge Farms myself. I'm a bus driver, and I need to get over to the bus lot over there at Station Camp. So from where I live, it's easier for me to cut through Cambridge Farms than it is to make a left on 25 and get to the line and try to go down. So I'm just really asking you to please consider that. I did email a few of you that had email addresses, a copy of the email that I got from Jerry Foster, if that means anything to you. And I'm hoping that the next time we do get to, before this goes to vote for the final vote, that we can all come and be there in your presence, so you can see the amount of people that are against this. I have a lot of senior people that live out here, and they've not been able to get onto the website or onto the Zoom meeting for one reason or another. And we did do a, we also had a petition that I believe my neighbor, Scott, had sent over to you. I believe he sent an email. So we're not sure exactly how. We should get everything to you, but I am asking you to reconsider this vote, if you would. And I'm with the other lady. I do believe that Ms. George does need to recuse herself from this. Every time she has mentioned anything, she keeps talking about how we need the homes, because she's a realtor. She should be looking at the need of the residents, not her need as a realtor. And with the 4,070 homes already been okay.
I don't know what's happened to the speaker, but we're not hearing her anymore. At this point, I am going to take the opportunity to remind our speakers that it's not appropriate to call individuals' names. I should have stopped the first speaker when that happened, and I apologize that I didn't. But do not call individuals' names, and please keep the conversation respectful. Thank you all.
Okay, I guess we should move on to Karen Piper. You'll have to unmute your own mic. There you go. Ms. Piper, that'll be a mute button on your lower left. If you use your mouse, scroll to the bottom, you'll see a mute and a little microphone. You need to click on that. Let's put Karen on hold while she's working.
There are two Karen Pipers on the call. You might try clicking on the other one, Jeff.
Okay.
In case.
There we go.
Yeah.
Have you got me now?
We have you now. Thank you.
Oh, terrific. Hi, how are y'all? I'm Karen Piper. I live at 815 Douglas Lane. I have lived out here for the last 35 years. My husband and I built this house. He is now deceased for the last 11 years. I am strongly opposed to the add-on to the road, any more houses over in Twin Eagles. And surprisingly, my mother actually owns a house in Twin Eagles, and I have a lot of friends who do as well. But my concern is this road is very, very dangerous. If you've not been out here, you really should come. Linda, I know you've been out here, and Jimmy, I'm sorry, I guess we're supposed to do this proper. But Jimmy, I know you have been too. This is a winding, curvy road. I sit in the middle of the S-turn. When I would tell people how to find my house, I would say I would have been in the red brick house with all the goats and S-turn. I don't have the goats anymore. But we have, it is a beautiful country road out here. We have bicyclists who ride through. We have a lot of walkers and joggers. And if we have any more traffic on this road, it's going to eliminate all of what we have. When Claudia and Wade Douglas sold their property, well, they passed away, and their property was sold, we had some really wonderful, great neighbors, so beautiful homes out on Douglas Lane, and that includes Victoria and Jack and several other people. And my point I'm trying to make is that we just really need to reconsider this. I think there's other places they can do their exit, and I do understand they do need an emergency exit. That's not the issue. The issue is coming out on Douglas Lane, because this road is too narrow for it. If you have a truck, just a regular, you know, half-ton, three-quarter-ton truck coming through with another vehicle, somebody's taking a ditch, because this road is not wide enough for it. We have people who fly through here, and they wrap these curves like they think it's Talladega, and I have had people wreck in my yard. I've had people wipe out my trees in my front yard. We've had people who wiped out and built trout's field, and it's, you know, it's just not a good place to be for an additional road. I think the owners, the developers of Twin Eagles, they have overbuilt their property, and they know it, and they should have put this in the plan a long time ago before they added all this additional homes. They are nice homes. Like I said, my mom owns one, and they're very nice, and a lot of friends of mine have them. But again, the road coming into Douglas Lane is just not going to work. We would have to, the road would definitely have to be widened, causing additional expense to the county, because you're going to have to buy that property from, I'm assuming that's how it works, from the owners of it. And it's just not feasible. And as Victoria stated earlier, that you're going, we've got new homes coming in over on the Bowes Place. We've got people coming in on the other side of 109, and right now, that 109-25 intersection is a hazardous place. Every night, I hear sirens, and ambulances coming through where there have been wrecks. And if you add more cars, more traffic, more homes out here, there's just going to be more people getting killed. You know, I really think it needs to be reconsidered, and I appreciate all of y'all for being here. I know this is a tough job, and I do appreciate your time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Michelle, go ahead.
Hello, this is Michelle Jevon. Can you hear me okay? Great, thank you so much. My address is 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to speak about the annexation and the plan of service for for the Twin Eagles Phase 15. I had sent all of you council members an email yesterday about the plan of services and my concerns with some of the numbers on that. So I hope that you all did receive that email that I sent you. Yesterday, I attended the budget hearings at the city hall. The fire department's requests were presented. I was surprised that only three of you council persons were there to hear what was presented. I would have thought the fire department's budget request would be something that you would be taking under serious consideration at this time with all the annexations that are coming in front of you right now. Just looking at the capital outlay request, the projection for just the next five years, and this is all based directly on a couple of annexations, and one is this Twin Eagles Phase 15, and the other one is the Bloodsow Springs annexation. That for the next five years, there were, the capital outlay was nine and a half million dollars, which is a significant amount of money. That doesn't even include paying for staffing these fire stations. The majority of that money was for building Fire Station Number Six at the industrial park, replacing fire trucks number one and number three, building Fire Station Number Seven up near the Meadows, which is something that is necessary for this Twin Eagles annexation, and that's something that's stated in the Plan of Service report for this. So yeah, the two biggest capital expenses that were were given to yesterday at this budget meeting were the two new fire stations. And like I said, it's a direct result from annexing Twin Eagles and Bloodsow Springs, just going out to the edges of where we're already in the city and pushing it out farther. And I don't understand why you, y'all aren't discussing this and why it's not a part of your discussions with these annexations, because can we afford all of this within only a five-year timeframe? Because we know that these two developments are going to be built within those five-year timeframes, and we're going to need these fire services. So how are we going to pay for it? Another bond, we just borrowed $11 million, so we're going to borrow more money. And can we afford that? At the meeting yesterday, it was said that our firefighters' Class A Uniform budget needs to be increased, because we've had a lot of turnover. And Mayor Brown, you gave some pushback about that, and there was discussion about whether this would could be something that they could earn over time. And this is only a $15,000 line item, only $15,000. And yet, none of you are saying a peep about whether we can afford to build two more fire stations, and that's millions of dollars. So how can we build and staff more fire stations if we can't afford $15,000 for Class A uniforms for our firefighters? Where are our priorities? This is upsetting to me, because that is important. Uniforms are important for firefighters, and they are important for our police officers. And Mayor Brown, didn't you just spend $15,000 a year ago on a survey that was sent out, a customer service, customer satisfaction survey? I think that we had people that turned that survey in, like 400 people, 1% of our population. And if we can spend $15,000 on an unnecessary survey, we can spend $15,000 on our firefighters to have Class A uniforms that fit properly. And this is, this upsets me. This is about priorities, and this is about respect. And I think we need to take care of our firefighters and our police officers, and they need their uniforms, and they need their gear. And if we have trouble affording $15,000 for uniforms, how are we going to pay for two more fire stations and two more fire trucks and two more crews of firefighters in the next five years? And why are none of you even talking about this? You all say that Mr. Jones makes a nice product, and I agree with that. But this has nothing to do with with that. Like, this is an annexation decision about whether this is something that's right for Gallatin right now and whether the city can afford to provide necessary police and fire services to these properties. And I think that you owe it to us, citizens who already live here, to do the right thing to figure out, can we afford this? And is it right to saddle the existing residents? And is it right to saddle the, the existing residents with more debt and more bonds when we don't even need these two annexations right now? Because we have a lot coming down the pipeline, so we don't need those.
Thank you, Ms. Juvance. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, well, I appreciate it so much. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And I'll remind the callers that this is the time of the meeting for public recognition on agenda-related items, so please keep your comments to items that are on this evening's agenda. Next.
Josh Graham, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, standing at my flat-top grill, so I apologize if there's some background noise. My name is Josh Graham. I live at three zero six Wildcat Run here in Gallatin, and I am opposed to this annex. I am born and raised in Nashville, Tennessee, and you couldn't pay me to live there in this day and age. And it's because Nashville became drunk with expansion and chased the almighty revenue. It did not plan ahead of time for all the expenditures that came with that expansion. And now you see them raising property taxes by thirty-seven cents on the dollar because they chase the almighty dollar. You guys have heard residents on Douglas Lane talk about the dangers of that road. You've listened to residents of Twin Eagles be adamantly opposed to an expansion of our neighborhood. We're not against the Jones brothers turning a profit. We're not against them making a living. We're not against them employing all the people that they employ. Those are all wonderful things. We just don't want to connect it to our neighborhood. We don't want Wildcat Run to become a parkway. We don't want any of these things. And when we all bought in to this American dream of homeownership in Twin Eagle subdivision, the plans didn't show anything like this. It showed a nice quaint subdivision. I am thirty-nine years old, and I am far below the median age in our subdivision. Everyone who shares a property line with me right now is retired, and it is glorious, and it is quiet. But if we vote to annex and we vote to expand, then you're selling out the residents of Twin Eagle, especially with all the negativity that you guys have heard. And there can only be one explanation for that. The only explanation is chasing the almighty dollar, and once again, being drunk with dreams of expansion. Would Reader's Digest have voted us the nicest place in America if we are where we plan to be five years from now? I don't know. I don't think so. I think Gallatin is a pretty good size. Obviously, there's always room for growth. Obviously, we need to grow responsibly, but we don't need to grow at the rate that we're growing. It's not good for our city. It's not good for our county. It's certainly not good for my neighborhood. It's certainly not good for my elderly neighbors who spend twenty minutes trying to back out of their driveway to make sure no traffic's coming. I can only imagine what it's going to happen when there is actually traffic coming. So I know I speak on behalf of everyone I share a property line with that couldn't figure out how to get on Zoom tonight, that we are one hundred percent opposed to this. We're not a hundred percent opposed to Randy Jones. We love them. They build a great house. But we're opposed to this. And a side note, and this doesn't have anything to do with the city council, so to say, but it is part of our neighborhood, and our neighborhood's on the agenda. Our homeowners association doesn't belong to the homeowner. It belongs to the builder until such clause that the subdivision is complete. And at the rate that they complete houses, if this annexation goes through, we have another ten years before our subdivision belongs to us, before we can make decisions that affect us, before we could decide how we're policed in our subdivision by homeowners associations. So I appreciate you taking the time to listen to all of us, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Beth Chavon? Chavon, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hello. Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I live at eight fifty-nine Douglas Lane. And I've lived out here for fifty-five years. And this road is dangerous, too narrow, in disrepair. And the people that drive down through here now drive through here too fast. There's been wrecks on this road. And I just think there'd be too much traffic if they put that access road out. And I just really think it's a bad idea for Douglas Lane that it will make more traffic and more dangerous situations. And that's my opinion.
Mr. Chavon, thank you. We got your address, but we need you to share your name for the record.
Michael Chavon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Goodwin, go ahead.
Hi, like you just said, my name is Renee Goodwin. I live at six oh four B Douglas Lane. And I just wanted to go on record stating that I am opposed to the annexation and definitely opposed to Twin Eagle subdivision opening up onto Douglas Lane. Like so many before me tonight have already stated the dangers of the road. Victoria Hagan laid out the number of homes that are being built and the dangers and costs and everything that that brings to it. We've had these meetings several times over the past few months through COVID, and because of COVID restrictions, we've not been able to meet in person as a group where I feel it's definitely more effective to be able to be seen and heard in person. It gives everyone more of the ability to be able to show up versus doing this on Zoom. But I understand that that's the way it's going to be right now, so that's how it is. I also want to bring to light the dangers also that were previously mentioned. And a few years ago, when on Douglas Lane, one of the homes on their property was proposing the wedding venue. Like, like was spoken earlier, three times in a row, that was struck down because of the dangers of adding additional traffic. And that was only for one venue that's going to be Thursday, maybe, Friday, Saturdays of people, not to mention what it's going to be putting an opening to an additional one hundred and seventy-one homes, plus everybody else that's in Twin Eagles that's going to come through. It's already so hazardous to come out of my driveway onto Douglas Lane and to try to get out onto twenty-five, whether I go right or left. With the new housing developments and the townhomes and everything that are coming in on twenty-five in Douglas Lane, there's no way that, that our road would be able to handle that. There would be, there would be severe, possibly deadly accidents that that would be happening, and it's, it's not what I want for my way of life out here. We worked our whole lives to be able to move out to the country, retire, have grandkids, and I, personally, for me, it's not what I want. So many of us that have come on here have said the same thing. We've said the same thing month after month after month. We've been on these Zoom calls month after month. And it's, it's a repeat, and I thank y'all for listening, but I hope that you put yourselves in our spot. If you have not driven out here onto Douglas Lane and onto twenty-five, I request that you do that. But just think of everything that's been said tonight and really take it in, and that's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you. And a quick reminder for those who have called on by cellphone, if you'd like to speak, please hit star nine. That will raise your hand, and then we'll call your name. We'll, we'll call your cellphone number. Brian Goodwin?
Yes, my name's Brian Goodwin, and I live at six oh four B Douglas Lane. And kind of, kind of repetitive, whatever things been said. I'm going to go ahead and remark, I'm, I'm opposed to the annexation onto Douglas. A lot of issues, current and also future. I know one of the past meetings, one of the things was said, well, we can go ahead and open it up, and we will confront those issues in ten years when it's completed. That's an asinine way to run any type of business, to just do it, and then we'll figure it out once we get the road or the subdivision completed. And I know that statement was made because I sat here and watched it made. It just didn't make a whole lot of sense. That's not, that's not very practical. These roads are very narrow. I know people are saying eighteen to twenty feet everywhere. They're getting to come out here and, and lay a measure and tape down to different areas and see it for yourself. A box has been hit a couple of times. My handle has bent off. My neighbor, her mailbox, three times. A pickup truck's mirror was in my driveway that hit a mailbox. And it's not just one vehicle veering off the road. This is passing. I pull a trailer quite a bit and pull and drive a full-size pickup truck. On my way in, just a little bit ago, I had somebody that probably didn't live out here using this road, and they were, they were booking through their, probably doing about fifty miles an hour. Kyle, it was stated earlier, people drive like it's a racetrack, and you start adding all these extra vehicles on here. Not to mention the repairs that need to be done to the road, the broadening and everything else. And then with all these developments going to be opening, what happens when all this heavy traffic out there and one oh nine shuts down? Where are people going to go? All this added traffic, they're going to get on their phones, Google how to get home, MapQuest, whichever, and they're going to go down Douglas Lane. So then we're going to be adding all these hundreds of cars trying to shortcut to get home that are going to be flying down our road to get to the other end. It's, it's just, it's opened up a lot of issues. As it is right now, we have a lot of people come out and dump stuff along the road. Right now, just past Ayman's house, there's a TV sitting out there on the side of the road. It's not a flat screen. It's just an old box TV sitting there that somebody didn't want no more, and they threw it out because they could get off the main road. What's going to happen when we have that added traffic? We're going to have all types of, and there's people along here that go by and pick it up. People dump their mattresses on the side. TVs, dishwashers, we've seen it all. I'm not going to keep beating a horse. I, I know y'all have heard this over and over and over. I can tell by some of your faces, y'all really are not excited about some of the calls coming in. You just want to get through it. I understand it. But when you drive through a neighborhood, and you see some of these signs put out there that says, "Drive like your children live here." I, I know y'all have had to see them. I've seen them when we lived, and I've gone through a subdivision. I ask you, I, I return it back to you. Vote like you live here. If you lived on this street, and you knew what it was like, and you had either your kids or your grandkids going to be driving home to you at night on these roads, and pray to God that they make it to you, and you're resting in someone else's hands saying, "Well, it'll be okay." Like I said, I'm not going to keep on. But I do ask you to vote the way it needs to go. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Osborne, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris Osborne, six twenty Douglas Lane. I'm just, I agree with what everyone's saying about Douglas Lane. And I totally am against the expansion of putting that expansion in to have more traffic on Douglas Lane. I want, it was interesting that Brian was mentioning how small the roads are, and a couple of other people. Just in front of my property, we took measuring tape yesterday, I believe. I have sixteen point four feet of street in front of my driveway. I, I don't even understand how you can get two cars across without hitting each other. I mean, you really can't. You have to pull over to the side. And then we're going to be adding additional car, more traffic and things like that. I, I just, I don't understand how everyone on the council can actually hear all these people, both from Douglas and from Twin Oaks, or Twin Eagles, and say, "We're opposed to it. We're opposed to it. Opposed to it." And you still vote yes. I, I, I don't fan them how, how you understand, how you do that. So many people are saying no. So many people say it's dangerous. Come on, get a clue. You, you need to turn this thing down. Thank you. Have a great night. Appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you. We'll turn to a cellphone caller. This is a cellphone ending, number ending in six five zero. And you'll hit star six to unmute.
Yes, my name is Cheryl Wallace, and I live at four oh nine West Height Street here in Gallatin. And I am against this annexation for the simple fact that I think we need to slow down on our growth just a little bit. Not only is the traffic so bad, as well as our trash. My husband works for the Resource Authority in Gallatin, where everyone takes their trash. And with the way this city is growing, they are being overflowed with trash. And our streets have the trash as well. I never remember seeing the trash on the sides of the road like I do see now, the way we're growing. I just want the council to consider residents that have lived here for a long period of time, and what everyone else is saying, that we need to just slow down on our growth. And I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Next cellphone ending in zero eight five?
Yes, my name is Scott Goodwin. I live at five ninety-two C Douglas Lane. We did a petition that I have emailed to every one of you that have an email address accessible for us. We had a hundred signatures of everyone against this. One of the requests that we had on the petition was that you defer final decision on this until we can meet in person. The county has went back to in-person meetings. I understand there's challenges there, but it is a lot different. There's a lot of people that can't have their voices heard because they're just not able to get on for whatever reason. I had seven people, as we were doing the petitions, that personally told me, and they signed a form, that they've tried to get on previous meetings, and were not able to get on that. Regardless of how that happens, I really think everyone should be able to be heard, and we're close enough to hearing things getting a little better there that I don't think there's any reason that we can't tap the brakes here a little bit and make sure we're doing what's best in everyone's, everyone's best interest. We also had requested that this not be passed at all, but if it was going to go through, that where they're connecting to Douglas Lane from there to twenty-five, they should require that there's two-foot shoulders added on each side from there to the road, because right now, it is extremely dangerous. It is not set up to handle the traffic that's on here now, much less connecting the subdivision to it. We also had requested there be a turning lane added at twenty-five. I can't imagine having the traffic coming through here and having it one lane out, and you're returning right or left in a single lane. And also that there would be a stoplight there, because that's going to be a disaster otherwise. These are important things that we need to be taking into consideration. It's frustrating out here, you know, we moved out here personally, and I think I could speak for other neighbors out here. We moved in this area because we wanted to be part of the Gallatin community. We loved what was out here. There was a lot of advantages. It's beautiful. There's things about Gallatin that really, really appealed to us. And it's really, really disappointing to feel like because we're one street over, or a couple of blocks over, or right across the line, that our safety doesn't matter. It's all about, we got to get this passed, and okay, let's pass it. And then somebody else will figure it out down the road when all other entities are saying they're not going to line the road. That's the county, county says they're not going to, the highway department says they're not going to do it, not just now, they're not going to do it later. But let's just pass it and we'll figure it out. And I, I guess I wish that we would be valued like we were part of Gallatin. Because we don't live in the city limits don't mean our safety doesn't matter. In the best interest of everybody doesn't matter. I, I think we're just as important as anyone else out here. Depending homes out here Victoria had brought up, I mean, there are on one end of Douglas Lane, you've got the Meadows, which is going to be 1,115 homes. On the other end, we're talking about the Bowles property of 2,200 plus, the 6,800, 68 homes. The condos, not to mention Twin Eagles, Ryan Homes. And another thing that's not being factored into this, we've got a bypass going in. And while that's not in our subdivision, there are, you guys are doing this to divert traffic, which that part makes sense. But right now that traffic is going on through the Red River Road, through Nashville Pike to slide straight on through. They're not getting on 109 going up to 25. That traffic is also going to divert, as this happens, up there and, and continue to add to a massive, massive problem down the road. We're talking about 4,000 homes ballpark being added right here, right here in this one little pinpoint area. The first two cars per home, we're talking about 8,000 vehicles plus the people taking the bypass. It's going to be a disaster. And, um, I just, you know, I've heard, you know, we had, you know, on the city council, it's been stated that, you know, Twin Eagles deserves another access. That's going to happen because they deserve it. I think the people of Twin Eagles deserves a safe road in anything that's being provided for them to get to Highway 25. They deserve a safe road to get all the way to 25. And, and that's just not part of the discussion, at least from my impression. I've heard from the city council that we need inventory, we need a lot of inventory, we need it in here now. And, and I understand growth happens. But we also deserve to have those, those people moving here deserve to feel like they're in a safe, secure environment where infrastructure, they're not going to be put in a dangerous situation. You know, I was told that, you know, there's a lot of county roads in Sumner County that are just like Douglas Lane, that there's 50 roads here just like Douglas Lane. I will challenge you guys to show me 500, I mean, 50 roads out here that have a 700-home subdivision attached to them. That is as narrow. If we just say there are other roads as narrow as Douglas. But they are not connecting to 700-home subdivision.
Mr. Goodwin, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. Uh, uh, and the traffic study needs to be addressed too. I don't think these factors were taken into consideration. And there was not a wire put across the road to do the traffic study. It was a man sitting at the end of a street on one end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob Vero, go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Brown, members of the council, this is Bob Vero, homeowner with my wife Julie at 614 Douglas Lane. Um, I want to thank each of you for your public service and the opportunity to address you tonight regarding our concerns. Uh, my call is in opposition to the annexation and more specifically its late impact on Douglas Lane. Um, various commissions and boards, as you well know, have heard our concerns. Probably ad nauseam over the last several months. Which is unfortunately often the case when hearings like this get protracted. You know, topics get sidetracked, interests get diverted, energy waxes and wanes. And I think our question is we all, as we intend to stay on topic and stay focused, um, is really simple. And that is, as citizens of Gallatin, as neighbors in the neighborhood on Douglas Lane, how do we make our sincere concerns about public safety any more clear? How do we make our voices more meaningful part of this consideration? You know, our representative government calls upon each of us as citizens to speak up, speak out and to inform our elected officials of our concerns and our interests. I think we've done that. We've done it repeatedly. Um, our neighbors have spoken. Time and time again, we've spoken. And I think now we're waiting to be heard. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Vero.
That appears to be everyone.
I don't see anyone else either.
We do have June Hedges that just popped up.
Miss Hedge? Miss Hedge, you're showing that you wish to speak and that you are unmuted. So if you would like to speak, you may go ahead. Anybody have any advice to give Miss Hedge? I'm at a loss because she's showing unmuted.
It may be that her setting on the microphone is not correct on her computer or device.
Can you give her guidance on how she might correct that?
You can change that by going to the microphone in the lower left corner if you are on a computer. And using the arrow up, it will say select a microphone and you will have some options. If that's the problem, you can change the microphone that it's using.
I'm not sure how to do that if she's using the zoom app on the phone, but I'm assuming it might.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we have you. Good job.
I'm 79 years old and normally I can handle this a little bit better than that. I am so sorry to, to waste your time.
I'm quite impressed. So go ahead, Miss Hedge.
Uh, I'm June Hedges and I live at 604A Douglas Lane. And I'm the neighbor that Brian Goodwin was talking about me having my mailbox hit three times. And, uh, you know, because of pickup trucks apparently coming, you know, toward each other and, you know, somebody just hit my mailbox. But anyway, I, I, it hasn't. So I think we're good now. Uh, but anyway, I'm requesting that you stop the annexation of the, uh, 59.10 more or less acres uh, for Twin Eagle, uh, Phase 15. Um, this is an important issue and I've, I've talked before, uh, on here last week, actually. It's an important issue, not only for Douglas Lane residents, but for all of the Gallatin area. The decisions that are being made by this council will affect all of Gallatin for a long time. Uh, I don't think enough is being taken into consideration about the total number of residences. And to me that the 4,000 plus, that's just an astronomical, a number for just this one end of, 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 of Gallatin. Uh, you, you know, I'm not hearing very much about the other sections of, of Gallatin. Uh, I know you've got the airport situation and, and some others. But it just seems like that it, it just really doesn't seem to make good business sense to concentrate so much, so much new activity, new growth in just one end of town. Um, but, you know, I guess you have to go where maybe where, where the land's for sale. But, um, but there just doesn't seem to be very many, uh, new large subdivisions being built in, in other areas. New construction, of course, is needed, but it should be done in a well-planned, uh, organized, controlled plan of action. And this doesn't seem, and maybe we just are not seeing the, you know, the, the background of it. But it just doesn't seem like that this is all that well-planned. Because it's such a tremendous number just right at this period of time. But anyway, uh, just, you know, the how I had asked was wanting to know the question about how many houses. And then Miss Victoria had, had said that, you know, 4,000 plus. Um, but it is a hot area and I can understand that. You know, another consideration is the large number of these residences that you apparently are planning with the minimum of brick and, uh, and the garage facing on the front. That is just, I think that when you have so many houses with a garage on, on the front of the house, sure that the builder can put them up, up more, more, more cheaply and probably maybe they sell well. But for a long time, uh, viewpoint for a city, it doesn't pass. It's just a matter of time before you, with that type of construction, you've got people parking on the streets. And then it generally goes downhill from that because I lived in Nashville before I moved here about 15 years ago. And there were so many areas where it, it just, the, the, the building was helter-selter with no real, real plans behind, uh, behind that. But anyway, I appreciate the council listening to my comments. And, uh, you know, just like I've said before, it's a dangerous road with no, with no shoulder of, of the road at all. And, and the speed limit's 30 mile per hour. But I just hope that the council does take into consideration the totality of the proposed construction, uh, in the area already. And, uh, the present infrastructure is just not, it's not sufficient. So that's all, that's all I wanted to say. And I thank the council so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Miss Hedge.
Kyle Ring.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. I am, I live on 153 Summerland Drive. Uh, my first name is Kyle, last name is Ring. So I am not in the immediate area that's affected by this. However, it will have an effect everything in the area. So I'm not going to echo what everybody said that's on Douglas Lane. However, I want to bring up utilities. Because even just tonight, there are people in Gallatin without power. Uh, this was a concern that I brought up when I attended the Bowles Farm meeting at the hotel. That there's, we've had power outages. I've had to replace appliances because of power outages in Gallatin. So for all of the homes that you're proposing in this area. You, do we really have the infrastructure to support it? And that's just on basic necessity of power to run an AC unit, to run a microwave, to cook your dinner on a stove, whatever it may be. But if we've already got problems like this in other areas, and now in this one concentrated area, you want to add 4,000, however many homes. What's the plan to, to be able to support the power output that's needed to supply each home? The traffic in this areas are, it, it is going to get worse. We understand that. But every time I've brought up traffic, it's been met with a resounding note that it's not going to become really an issue. And this is on the more of the planning side. And I'm not a traffic planner, so I don't know. However, crossing a four-lane road, that's going to have traffic increases where you don't have a stoplight. Sounds like a problem. So infrastructure-wise is something I hadn't heard a whole lot about. That's all I wanted to bring up. My concerns are still the same as everybody on Douglas Lane. I feel for them because I feel like they're kind of getting a raw deal in terms of not being able to have their faces seen in person to show their opposition. I can speak for myself on Summerland. I'm also opposed and think that more strategic growth to help the city is good, but just blindly shooting from the hip is not going to help anybody. Again, thank you, everybody on the council for your time. Thank you for, you know, everything you do for us. Have a great night.
Thank you. The cell, the cell phone ending in 742. Go hit star six to unmute. There you go.
Yes, this is Karen Goodwin. I live at 592C Douglas Lane. And just a couple of things, um, regarding the Twin Eagles, of course, I'm not for it. Traffic study, very interested to know about that. And I feel like that should be made publicly available. If there's some way that that could happen, I'd really appreciate that. There's several of us that would be interested to see that. And then also the details of how that study was conducted as far as the dates, the times. We've had the pandemic. This has been going on for a year, which leads me to my second point. The fact that, you know, you, you hear and you've heard from a number of people in the area tonight who are against this. And I'm asking the council members to do the right thing here. Because we've been involved in this for, it's been over a year that this has been going on. And every time we're on a phone call, whether it's just for comments or the vote. There's, there's never been anyone, to my recollection, who's been for it other than uh, a few of the council members themselves. And that just seems wrong to me. And so I would just appreciate and like to see you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Cell phone ending in 694.
Yes, this is Randy Cannon. I live 432 Lucy Circle, Twin Eagles. Uh, jettled the annexation of Phase 15 of Twin Eagles. Uh, we have a severe traffic problem going down Wildcat Run. Uh, there's been several mailboxes that's been hit due to the fact that we have a high volume of traffic. Uh, and talking to Ron Jones recently in the last couple of weeks. Uh, to finish the phase that he is working on now will take at least two to two and a half years before they even get to the project Phase 15 on to Douglas Lane. Uh, I've noticed that the City Planning Commission has, uh, said that the traffic would be a hazard going down the roadway on Douglas Lane. And the fact that, uh, there would be a strain on the city police, fire department. Uh, the additional resources, the staffing, the equipment and to serve that area. Does the city have that cost in mind in the budget to be done? So anything that's going to go down Douglas Lane will not happen for at least another two to two and a half years. And the gentleman who said last meeting that there could be some, uh, barriers put up. Would those barriers be put up between the existing phase that's being built now? Between that and Phase 15 to where all of that 171 homes would then exit on to Douglas Lane and stop that from coming through Twin Eagles. Where Wildcat Run is drastically needing to be repaved at whose expense? Would that be the city's? Because we have Amazon, we have FedEx, we have UPS, we have the mail. We have, uh, uh, yard lawn care companies working in this neighborhood. They are blocking the streets. You have to stop, let somebody go around you. There are walkers walking in the middle of the street at their, uh, risk. But, uh, I agree with the mayor who says that the city has to stop. Set back, think this through. Gallatin is growing too fast, way too fast. You've got to back up. There's no hurry to have a yes vote on this particular Phase 15. And let the county decide, not you, the city. With 4,000 additional homes going to be put in this particular area. with four thousand additional homes going to be put in this particular area at twenty-five and one oh nine. And the fact that how much traffic is that going to create going to three eighty-six, I believe that's the old Vietnam veteran bypass, getting onto that to where you have three to four wrecks a month? How much traffic is going to be put there? How many more wrecks are going to be put there? Uh, Twin Eagles cannot handle any more traffic if there's no crash barriers put up in between these two sections. Because the councilman who said before that majority of that traffic probably would be coming through Twin Eagles. It would not be necessar- excuse me, would not necessarily be going out on Wildcat Run. So with that being said, uh, using the crash barriers if this thing was to go through would be a good idea. But where are you going to put them? Twin Eagles cannot handle it. They cannot handle any more traffic. There's not been any studies of the amount of traffic that is put on Twin Eagles. There's one to two mailbox that get nailed every single year as average on Wildcat Run. And like I said, in talking with Randy Jones, it's going to be two and a half years. And as these folks have said before, two and a half years to finish this phase that he's in now and then start another Phase fifteen? He builds on average, me and him talking, fifteen to max of twenty homes per year. You guys can do the math on a hundred and seventy-one homes and how long that will take before that exit gets built onto, uh, Douglas Lane. And where will that traffic come through before that exit is built? It will be coming through Twin Eagles, which cannot hardly handle the traffic it has now. So I thank you for your time. I hope you've taken consideration that the City Planning Commission has said no. The fire department has said no. The police have said no. The city, where is the rest additional resources they're going to come from to support not only Twin Eagles, but the other four thousand homes, condos and apartments? Uh, and the roads that need to be repaired. Wildcat Run now is a patch job. And the roundabout now is getting completely, excuse me, tore up as I went through today and noticed that it will probably need to be patched before the end of this year due to heavy equipment trucks going through for the next, if you pass this for the next twelve years and our homeowners associations will style rocket because of common errors.
Mr. McKinnon, I'm sorry, Mr. McKinnon, I'm sorry, but your time is up and we appreciate your comments.
One question, Mayor, I would have to ask is that the councilman who is a realtor sustained their sales from a vote for conflict of interest?
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comment on agenda related items? I don't see anyone, so I'm going to say that public recognition on agenda related items is closed. I'm going to proceed into Mayor's comments. I will keep them short. Um, just to let everyone know, we are, we have begun the budget process. Um, yesterday was our first three meetings and they will continue tomorrow. So it's an exciting time. Um, I really love the budget period. It helps us look forward and make plans for the future. Do you want to tell everybody that they need to stay weather aware tomorrow? Apparently there is a chance of some dangerous weather in our area. Hopefully we won't have any, but be aware. And I just want to acknowledge the fact that this is about one year almost to the day where COVID hit our city. And so I think in the coming days, um, it would be appropriate to remember the people who have lost their lives due to COVID and those who have suffered loss and those who have suffered illness. And so I just ask you to keep them in your prayers and on your hearts. And with that, I'll conclude Mayor's comments and move to the regular agenda. And we probably heard from most people on the first three items related to public hearings, but we do have three public hearings. Um, the first one is public hearing on Resolution R two one zero two dash fifteen. And Councilman Overton will introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing Resolution R two one zero two dash fifteen, Resolution City Galloping, Summerton County, adopting Plan of Service for Renexation of fifty-nine point one oh acre parcel, tax map one fourteen, partial zero one six dash oh three, located north of Wildcat Run, Eastern Douglas Lane, providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
And this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the Plan of Service for the annexation may do so at this time. We ask that you raise your hand. Again, identify yourself and give a shrub address.
Okay. Michelle, go ahead.
Uh, Michelle Juvans, thirteen thirty-five Long Hallup Pike. I want to say on record as a resident of Gallatin, I am opposed to this Plan of Service. Um, I read it and it does have several, um, issues, I think, with the, with the math in the, the tenure, uh, table. I also think that, um, where it says that this is not going to, um, be financially positive for the city and that, that it will have to be made up in other areas of the budget. That means that us who live in Gallatin are going to have to, kind of pick up the tab for this annexation. Um, and I already told you what I thought about, um, the expense with the fire. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else wishing to speak under this public hearing, please raise your hand now. Now I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on Resolution R two one zero two dash fifteen closed. Item number two is public hearing on Resolution R two one zero two dash sixteen. Again, Councilman Overton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution, City of Galloping, Summerton County, Tennessee, Anexing Fifty-nine point one zero acre parcel, tax map one fourteen, partial zero one six dash oh three, located north of Wildcat Run and Eastern Douglas Lane to the City of Galloping, authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on official zoning atlas. Assigning the annexed area to the county district to repel and conflict of order, providing for severability and providing for its effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Okay, this is public hearing on Resolution R two one zero two dash sixteen. Those joining us on the meeting probably know the routine by now. Raise your hand to indicate that you'd wish to speak during this public hearing. Okay, I see no hands raised indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on Resolution R two one zero two dash sixteen closed. Moving now to, um, public hearing on ordinance O two one zero two dash seven, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is an ordinance of City of Galloping, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning fifty-nine point one oh acre parcel from RR Rural Residential County District to MU Mixed Use District for preliminary master development plan for Twin Eagles Phase fifteen, located north of Wildcat Run and Eastern Douglas Lane. Authorizing vision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repelling conflict of ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on ordinance O two one zero two dash seven. Raise your hand if you would like to speak. And, um, I see two hands raised. Mr. Henshaw, I will let you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Michelle, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Michelle Juvans, thirteen thirty-five Long Hallup Pike. I was actually had raised my hand for the previous one. So I just wanted to put on record that I'm opposed to annexing this piece of property. I don't think that it's something the city can afford at this time. And then also I wanted to put on record that I'm opposed to, um, to the rezoning of this. I, I believe that I think, uh, solution is for the developer to develop this in the county. Um, that would be something that would be a win-win for the city and also for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Pascal Juvans, go ahead.
Captain Juvans, one four three five Long Hallup Pike. Um, I've been looking at the, everything on that project and what really, uh, uh, get me that, um, some of councilmen, including the councilman of that district, said he's concerned with safety and that we need an exit road for the development. Uh, what, you know, get me that this council voted that development the way it is. And if we really wanted an exit road, why is the exit road on the last phase of the development? So that means we're going to build our cities again at two hundred and seventy to start because we already know it's going to come with more. And when everything is done, finally the road's going to be built. So the safety issue, um, it's again a fear tact tactic, the same way you guys using the county. So, um, I'm like a lot of people opposed to that project. I don't think we can afford it. Uh, and if the developer really wanted to fix the problem, um, there was some property was for sale there. Uh, a lady made that comment a few weeks ago on Facebook. There were properties were for sale there. He could buy the lot, make another exit to, uh, to the main road and after that come back. And when another exit is there, maybe find another solution. But, uh, there's a lot of safety issues there. And again, if the road, the exit was really a safety issue, why is that road not on Phase one? Because of course that costs money and it's all about money. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Choxia.
Yes, I'm Ashley Choxey. I am one of the owners of eight twenty-five Douglas Lane. Um, and I'm also opposed to this. Like the last gentleman just said, this is something that should have been planned in an earlier phase. Um, I don't know if y'all have actually driven down Douglas Lane, but it's quite curvy. Um, it's a narrow road. It's not designed for heavy traffic that would come with allowing a large neighborhood to exit in and out of Douglas Lane. So if this is a safety concern for the neighborhood itself, exiting in and off of Douglas Lane is not the answer to this issue. This needs to be looked at from a different point of view. Uh, maybe y'all need to take a drive down Douglas Lane because this, it's just not a good road. Be putting multiple families up and down the road on. Um, so we are opposed to it. Um, and I think I speak on behalf of a lot of the residents of Douglas Lane.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask that you give us your name and address. I did not get it when you first began to speak. And I wanted to make sure that the person taking the minutes for the meeting does.
Yes, it's Ashley Choxey. Um, my maiden name is Piper.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, June Hedge, go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, do my, do my remarks that I had made previous earlier in the earlier part, do they extend to these, to these, uh, these resolutions that are before you now?
Um, I mean, certainly your comments are heard whether they're spoken during public comments or during these public hearings.
Okay. Do you mind telling me the difference? I mean.
Um, public hearings are required by law on specific properties to make sure that public notice is given specific to those items for his public recognition happens for the Gallatin City Council routinely at every meeting. And so it's just, it's, uh, just, uh, it's a, I guess, a mechanism to make sure that affected residents are made aware um, in a more public way in the public hearing. And, and I would invite Ms. Haumacali to add to that if I didn't say specifically what I should have.
Okay. So basically, if, if I've spoken before, then I don't really need to say the same things again.
I think that would be correct. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Haumacali, is there anything you should add to that?
No, I think you covered it well.
Thank you. All right, I see no one else, um, indicating that they wish to speak. So I will declare public hearing on ordinance O two one zero two dash seven closed. That concludes the public hearings for the evening. We'll move now to item number four, which is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash five. And for this, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Summerton County, Tennessee, rezoning a sixteen point seven eight acre portion of a parcel from the R twenty low density residential district to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, rezoning a two point oh five acre portion of a lot from the MU Mixed Use District to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, rezoning a three point eight acre portion of a parcel from the R twenty low density residential district to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and rezoning a three point oh four acre portion of a lot from the Mixed Use District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District with a preliminary master development plan for the goat farm totaling twenty-five point six acres, located south of Nashville Pike and east of Shoots Lane. Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Fan, opening the floor for discussion. Did have one conversation this week and I might ask that the representative from the project address this because the question was specific to the apartments that were originally in the plan. And so I would give you an opportunity to address that. And I don't know who might, if there is a representative from the project, I bet there is. Might raise your hand for Mr. Henshaw's benefit.
I thought they took the apartments out of there.
That's what I want to hear said. Mr. Sexton or Mr. Kane?
Because it was stated last time and, okay.
Yeah, Kevin Kane's here. And, uh, I'm not quite sure what the question was, um, that you were addressed with. But yes, we have removed the apartments from the MRO's zoning portion of the development.
Thank you. I appreciate you, um, um, saying that yourself because that was what the person I spoke with was interested in hearing. So I thank you for that. Anyone else with any questions for the representatives or any further discussion you'd like to have? Okay, seeing none of the council indicating that they wish to speak, I'm going to ask Ms. Alexander to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
You're muted, Arlene.
Yes. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor Seven I Zero Nace.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item number five is a resolution, R two one zero two dash thirteen. And for it, Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Yes, this is the resolution of City of Gallatin, uh, Summerton County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for the annexation of three partial totaling six hundred and fifty-five point forty-four plus or minus acres, tax map one one three, partial zero zero one point zero zero, zero zero two point zero zero and zero four five point zero zero, located north of Red River Road and east of Highway one oh nine, providing for an effective date and I so move.
Okay.
And a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Overton, um, opening us for discussion on this. I have, um, Ms. Love with her hand raised.
Um, I, I'm not sure at which one of these three to, to bring this up. But the, the thing that I liked about this Spole's property, development was the older adult section. Well, it's come to my attention that we don't have any guarantee that, that will actually come to be that way, that the builder can change their mind. Is that true? I don't know who.
I would ask Mr. McCord or Ms. Haumacali or a representative from the project to address that. Ms. Love, I agree with you. I would like, um, some assurance, um, some guarantee, if you will, that that, um, portion of the development be held to that standard. Um, Jeff, for your information, Mr. Haas has his hand raised and he's the representative for this. We might start with him.
Hello?
Mr. Haas, yes, you're unmuted and we can hear you. If you would, if you would speak to that question, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, yes, absolutely. And thank you all again for, uh, hearing us this evening. Um, uh, what I will say in regards to the active adult portion, the age restricted portion, if you will, is at, uh, there are two acts, two approaches here that we think, um, will help to answer this. One is it is a condition of the PMDP that, uh, a certain number of the entitled units are active adult. No doubt about it. If they are not active adult, whoever does that, I can tell you that's not. No doubt about it. If they are not active adult, whoever does that, I can tell you that's not the intent of our client. And I would love to speak to our client and the way they've approached projects, but. Whoever does that and says, I'm not doing active adult, they will have to come back to you and make that change on the PMDP to make that happen, number one. The second point I would like to make is the client has not given me, and this is, this is no fault of the client. This is standard procedure. Until the project has been completely rezoned and, and all the information is signed and all of that, but, um. They have, uh. Pending agreements, let's say, uh, they are, we have already been released to begin FMVP documents on the. First phase of the project, which is of the community as a whole, which is the active adult portion, the first phase of the active adult. Which is basically goes from Hatton Track all the way back to the amenity, if you've got a plan in front of you. Um, so, uh. Two things about that is one, we will be back before you at, with FMVP with that phase very shortly. If all goes well this evening, um, and two, uh, we would have to, the, the PMDP would have to be revised. It's, it's as simple as that. Or they could not build. They could not build those, those number of units on the land.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. McCord, is there anything that you wish to add at this point?
Uh, it has been identified as being active adult. I don't know what I, active adult is. Uh, you certainly wouldn't be able to violate any fair housing standards that discriminate against people because of their age and perhaps the city attorney might want to address that.
Ms. Hamacali, thoughts? On some way that we could, um. Hold it to that.
The condition of approval right now, and they would, it would have to come back for PMDP, but we could not, um. Of course, planning commission can always amend the PMDP. As of right now, the way they are approving at this time, that's in there, and I do agree with Mr. McCord that. Fair housing would come into play, but typically that is to discriminate, um. Against the older adults, which I understand is what the active community is, active adult community is for. So I don't think we're, there are any. Right now for that.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Mayor, I don't know if I'm, if I'm still, uh, able to speak, but I might be able to help with that question as well.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so culture as a developer of these active adult communities, and I'm sorry, that's an industry term. Um, but there are age limits associated with those. And the reason why they are called active adult is because different states have different age limits, different laws. Um, they will follow state and federal laws that this is a. Um, I can't necessarily say the proper term, but that, uh, these homes will be deed restricted in some ways. Um, the clubhouse, all of the amenities which are run by the HOA. Um, can certainly has the ability to say, uh, no one under the age of eighteen, for instance, or sixteen, whatever it is. Again, different states have different laws, but they will follow those laws. Um, and, uh, uh, happy to say that, that this, the, the builder that is looking at phase one as culture develops that. Uh, is very experienced, uh, in this type of neighborhood and community.
Ms. Love?
If, if the active adult community is being built and not enough are sold. Or there's not enough interest by the age of fifty five and over, then. What have we got? We've just got, uh. Buildings that what can be rented, more condos, you know, they, I, I don't, I don't feel like. I have an assurance that that's definitely what's going to happen there if the market's not there for these, for that age group. Um. Thrilled about those apartments on the other side either. That, but that's a different discussion.
Uh, if I can address this and, and I, I am a believer in, um. Luck and karma and all that voodoo stuff, so. It, I hesitate to say this, but I was given this information today. A question came up about our client. Um. And, uh, but, you know, basically asking about their demonstrated success, the history of their firm, and I. I can't tell you exactly when they were founded, but the, the client simply responded, we have never. And this is the bad luck part, whenever you say never, but we have never not completed a project. They have three active projects on right now that are three to seven year projects that are large projects. This client, uh, they're experts. And they chose Gallatin. We are very happy that they chose Gallatin. We think it's a very wise choice. We hope you do as well. Um, we hope the community does. Um, but if for some reason. Um, that, uh, those houses aren't selling in this market. Uh, number one, that would be totally against the industry, uh, you know, direction that, that real estate is moving for that age group, but. Number two, uh, that would mean there's probably a larger issue and I would imagine at that point. Uh, there could be multiple changes to the PMDP and, 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 you know, if it makes. If it makes, I think the protection is in place, but if it makes folks feel more comfortable about saying, let's make it a condition of approval. We're in can, we're in agreement with all the conditions of approval by staff. I believe there are four or five of them. If you want to add this one, we would absolutely support that, um, and be in agreement with that.
And Mayor, this is James Fenton, if I may. One of the things we need to recognize is that, um, this last week. With the home sales in, in Gallatin, just in the three seven zero six six area code. The average day on the market was four days.
I'm unmuted.
And that's a, that's a report that anyone can access, and I think we need to understand that there is incredible. Uh, pressure here in the area and to have a, a community like this. Uh, I'm, I'm not for or against, I'm just saying what's available right now, that, um. There is incredible, um. Demand for housing right now and the type of housing that this development is offering. Um, offers an ability for our community to grow without putting pressure on our schools and our, um, services. So, um, just take that into account to look at this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. I do want to say just a couple of things really quickly. Um, one is I did meet with culture a week or so ago and. Um, this is relevant to what Mr. Haas said earlier. They did demonstrate to me, um, some very large projects that they held through. Very difficult economic downturn that happened in that eight, nine, ten time. Um, and, you know, did not sail, sail, did not bail, and I appreciate that. Also, um, kind of triggered by what Mr. Fenton said, but also by some of the commenters earlier this evening. I think that, um, it's very, very difficult for people who live in our community to understand. That we're not growing to attract people here. We're not building houses to get more people here. We're building houses to accommodate the people who are here. And that's where the market demand comes from, and that's why the building keeps happening. Um, we have people who are from here, who, um, work here and cannot find a place to live here. And that is not what we want for the people of our city. Yes, it's caused by the number of people that have moved here in recent years. But the effect is it's impacting, you know, the people who already live here and want to continue to live here. Um. And then I think I'd also just like to say that, um, there, there were a lot of comments earlier that, you know, this council doesn't listen to. Um, what the will of the people is and, and, and the disconnect there is that. No one ever wants change next to them. And I mean, I've been there. I know how it feels. I, you don't want your environment to change, but. Um, unless it's your property, it's rare that you can control that. And when people are trying to come in and provide housing. Or, or do things, um, like, you know, cultures trying to do or, or, or some of the other developers in our city. They're responding to market demand and, um, they're not building to attract people or recruit people here. And I do wish that we could slow down our growth and I think we should be careful in what we're approving. And I'm not crazy about apartments. I do not want any more apartments. At this point, I feel like, um, we're saturated, but then when you look at the data. Um. It shows that, you know, the occupancy rate is very, very high, which then would indicate a demand. The challenge it creates for us is that it makes a lot of people have to be absorbed into our community at one time. So that's all I'm going to say about this. Um, I think, Ms. Love, did you want to say something else? I know Mr. Fan has his hand raised.
I, as far from what you just said, Mayor, I agree with what you're saying, but. Perhaps the apartments are full because the housing market is low and we have. Somebody said earlier, over four thousand that could be being built. So when, and not all approved, of course, yet, but as they're built, maybe the demand for apartments is going to go back down.
Well, and then what you say makes me think too, another point that I think is important to make is when we look at all these number of homes in the pipeline. They're not being built this year. They're being built over the next decade or fifteen years or twenty years. And in my time in Gallatin, certainly not as mayor, um, and things are different now because of the growth in the middle Tennessee region. Which all cities around Nashville are experiencing. Gallatin is not some unique exception. That is having rapid growth while all the other cities are not, but, um, but in my time here, and I think a lot of us that have been here a while have seen. A lot of projects that were approved, um. Market demand change, plans change, owners change, and those plans ultimately change, so. Um, you know, we know it's approved. We know it's in the pipeline. We have an idea of a timeframe on a lot of those. Um, but the economy and the demand is certainly going to dictate the time in which those are built. Uh, Mr. Fan?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna be for this project as long as we're felt comfortable and assured that we're going to get a fifty five plus community. I like the project because I think it's a plus in tax revenue. And I like the idea that one company is going to build it all the way through. But I do, I will be even more comfortable once we're assured that the fifty five plus community comes into place first because it doesn't put a burden on our school system.
Mr. Haas, is it, is it, and I know we spoke of this, but is it the developer's plan to build that first? It is, correct?
Uh, yes, Ms. Mayor, um, it is, and, and as I said earlier, uh. Our, we've, we've already been released to start, uh, engineering drawings for FMVP and. And again, I think that's also very important here that this, this PMD plant, PMDP plan and, uh. As a preliminary plan and the, uh, rezoning document and the annexation that comes with it. Really sets us on a path to continue this conversation, hopefully pretty regularly over the next, uh, you know. Really starting three, four months from now, maybe less through the next four or five years. Um, where we have to come before, uh, you know, at least certain bodies and certain actions will come before, uh, for FMVPs, so. Um, we have entitlements, but, uh, you know, none of our, our final uses are approved. We have conditions and architectural details and. So many of those things which, which we think is going to, uh, set this community apart, so. I, I would just say again that, uh, we absolutely, we will be in, uh, very shortly with the, uh, with, with the. Active adult and if not, there is a protection in place with the PMDP and I think, uh, your attorney and your. Planning director both agreed with that.
Ms. Hamacali, did you have a comment to add?
Yes, I just wanted to add, uh, for Captain Fan's purpose. That I, I think I understood the developer to say that they agreed to add that as a condition of approval. Uh, it wouldn't be for the plan of services. It would be, uh, would think for our ordinance. But I think I heard the developer representative say that they would agree to add that as a condition of approval. Um, to, to develop that portion first, the, uh, active adult community or fifty five plus, whatever we're going to call it. And I think that you could amend the ordinance tonight, not this resolution, but the ordinance, uh, to add that condition of approval because they have agreed.
That's what we should do.
Okay, that would be the ordinance if these resolutions are approved. Did you have anything?
Ms. Mayor, one, one thing I, I just want to throw out there, we, you know, um, I, I think. I haven't spoke with my client about that condition specifically. I did. Agreed to the condition about the fifty five and older and our intent is to come in there first. Um, you know, the, the world is certainly fluid right now, but, um, our intent is to do that first. We've been released. We've started. However, there's also a little park down there, fifteen acre park. And, uh, we may want to make some, um. Uh, improvements down there as a trailhead. And, um, if you all are okay waiting for that till after the active adult, that's fine as well. Um, but I just, I didn't want that to surprise anyone. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Fan.
Would require a FMVP and a site.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fan, did you have something else?
No, not yet.
And Mr. Fennel, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything that Councilman Steve Fan said. Uh, I think it is a good project. Um, I like the retirement fifty five and over. Uh, the only thing that I disagree with is apartments. If it just didn't have those there, I would be, uh, I would support this. That's all I've said.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna ask Ms. Alexander to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennel.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Oh, that was a no?
Correct, no.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
All right, Mayor, we have. Four As and three nos.
Okay, mash, motion passes four to three. Moving on now to. Item number six, which is resolution R two one zero two dash fourteen, and Councilman Alexander is recognized again.
Yes, this is the resolution of the city of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, and it's in a three partial totaling six hundred fifty five point forty four plus or minus acre. Tax map one one three partial. Zero zero one point zero zero, zero zero two point zero zero and zero four five point zero zero. Located north of Red River Road and east of Highway one oh nine into the city of Gallatin, authorizing the annex. Property to be, uh, indicated on the official zone and is assigned to, assign the, uh. Annex area to a council district, uh, repealing conflicting ordinance, uh, providing for servability and providing for an effective date, now so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion. Yeah, see no one indicating that they wish to discuss. Ms. Alexander, if you'd like to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennel.
No.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
No.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, four I zero, uh, four I's and three Nace.
The resolution R two one zero two dash fourteen passes four to three. Item number seven is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero two. Dash six, Councilman Alexander, you're it again.
Yes, this is the orders of the city of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee. Uh, rezoning three partial totaling six hundred fifty five point forty four plus or minus acre. From the RR Rural Residential County District to the R eight. Uh, PRD meeting necessary residential plan residential development district. Four hundred and thirty five point six plus amount. Plan Residential Development District, four hundred and thirty-five point six plus or minus acres from the Rural Residential County District to the MU Mixed Use District, one hundred thirty-two point ninety-two plus or minus acres from the RR Rural Residential County District to the PVP Plan Business Park District, eighty-six point ninety-two plus or minus acre with a preliminary master development plan for the Bowles Property located north of Red River Road and east of Highway one oh nine. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning analyst, repealing conflict and ordinance, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. And I so move.
Second.
Have a motion.
Mayor, before we vote on this, I would like to hear from.
Wait, just one moment, please. I have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Overton. And I do want to remind this council that this would be where you would amend if you so desired.
Yes.
With that, Councilman Fan?
We need to hear from Mr. McCord. I think there's an issue with the EDA.
Appreciated. Yes, council, as we had discussed at a previous meeting, I believe a council committee meeting, that after discussion with the Economic Development Agency, after the Planning Commission had made their recommendation, is that EDA had suggested some minor modifications to the zoning ordinance, which would reallocate small portions of the property for different types of uses. This would also affect the master development plan. So what this would do would change the allocation of various properties to various zoning districts that are proposed with the master plan. So it would change that portion of the plan, which is designated for the R eight PRD Medium Density Residential Development, from four hundred and thirty-five point six acres to four hundred and twenty-two point two acres. So about twelve acres, thirteen acres less, that's R eight. And it would also change the area designated for mixed use from one hundred thirty-two point nine two acres to one hundred and twenty-four point two six acres. And lastly, it would change the planned business park from eighty-six point nine two acres to one hundred and nine acres. As a result of this, it would change the master development plan graphically. And this was a exhibit that was discussed and I think presented to you at one of the work sessions. So it would create more of the property north of Albert Galton as planned business park and reduce that portion of that property that was designated initially as MU and also slightly reduce the, which the bulk of the property would be zoned R eight Medium Density Residential, Plan Residential Development. So if you're inclined to support this change that's supported by EDA, then you would want to.
No, no, put the sound to you.
In addition to any other condition that was discussed tonight.
Hey, council, you've heard from Mr. McCord, Mr. Fan?
Yes, ma'am.
Wait. What do we do? We just need to amend the mo, we just need to amend this, this ordinance. Is that what we need to do?
Yes, sir, you would amend. And again, it was pretty detailed as far as the acreage. And of course, the legal descriptions will change as well to accommodate those changes in acreage. And the master plan will also be amended to adopt the master plan that coincides with the acreages that I just described.
Do we need a minute before we vote on it? Is that what you're saying? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mr. Haas has agreed to this, and Mr. Fenton, that is correct, right?
Agreed, agreed, sir, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we amend the ordinance to the acreages that Mr. McCord just stated on record.
Second.
And motion by Councilman Overton to, with an amendment, a second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion on the amendment?
Well, also indicate that this changes the master plan to correspond with that. It's not just the acreage, it's the master plan as well.
That's correct.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Alexander, I'm going to ask that you call the roll for the vote on the amendment, please.
I mean, Ms. McCully has something to say.
Ms. McCully, okay, I'm sorry. The important one.
I didn't know if it was the intent of the body to also make the other amendment. If so, probably be appropriate to make.
Included in this.
Fifty-five plus.
Can we include it in this as well, Susan?
Yes, I would recommend that you make one amendment to this ordinance.
I'll also in my amendment, I'll make a motion that the fifty-five and over community, whatever their terms are for that, be started first on this development. And I don't have a problem with them starting a park, a fifteen acre park. I don't have a problem with that. I'm talking about as far as building units on it. I would say, I won't, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Fan. Let's, let's just say in the, in this ordinance, because Mr. Haas has agreed to it, that we'll just say that this has to be started first.
So, Mr. Fan, does your addition stand? Does your second stand with that addition to that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if I could, just for, for clarification, you want that as a condition of approval, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, so I have the amendment and the second, and any discussion at this point, since we've added to it? Okay, seeing no one, Ms. Alexander, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor Fennell?
No.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, I have four As and three Nos.
Okay, so the amendment passes four, three, taking us back to the original motion on ordinance O two one zero two dash six. Is there any further discussion on this? Ms. Hamacali, is your hand raised to say something? Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, Ms. Alexander, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, I have five As and two Nos.
Wait a minute, ma'am, change my vote to no.
Change your vote to no, yes, sir.
Yes.
Mayor, I have four As and three Nos.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm moving to item number nine, which is Resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen. Councilman Overton is recognized.
Did we skip number eight, Mayor?
Probably did, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you, eight, R two one zero two dash seventeen, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution, City of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, adopting the plan of services for the annexation of thirty-one point three seven eight acre partial, tax map one thirty-five partial zero three two point oh one, located west of Woods Ferry Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Ferry Road, and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion. Ms. Love has her hand raised.
When this first was brought up, a lady called and said that she lived nearby and that she was really concerned about flooding if this project went through. What, is Nick here or does anyone else remember that? And has anyone looked into it?
Nick is here, and he would be the appropriate one to speak to that. I say he's here. There he is.
Yes, I am here. Is this the, the Woods Ferry?
Yes.
Woods Ferry. Right.
I forgot, development. I guess it doesn't say. Wood Crossing, thank you. Again, Nick Tuttle sitting here, and Lance Wagner, Stormwater Utility Manager, spoke at length with Ms. Posey, I'm not sure if she joined in here tonight, but I think he spent probably near an hour speaking with her about various issues, including stormwater issues that she was concerned about. And at this time, we have received some preliminary numbers from the developer. And they are to actually reduce the, the flow rate that is leaving the site. So that's, that's all that we can go on at this point because we, while we go through the zoning process, we don't get those, those final designs. So I can't really comment any further about the designs. Her house is very near a creek. And, and of course, that's the natural path for sewer to flow down as well. And that's, I believe she was probably just as concerned, according to Lance, about that as she was about the storm water. She just, I think she, like most people that, that have spoken tonight, you know, would prefer not to have any, any development occur around them. And so she's, she's got those concerns, but as far as we can tell on the stormwater side, the information that we've been given, the counts are, are good. They're showing that it's like, that way. She'll, she won't, she won't suffer any more damage or any issues.
You've kind of been in and out there, Nick, but I think from what I understand, you all have, have addressed those concerns that she had, and I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions or discussion? Ms. George?
I didn't know if I can raise my hand or not. I did speak to the builder about this also, and she said that they were definitely going to do whatever they could to appease her and be sure that she was getting her area where it was not going to affect it any more than anybody else. So they were really willing to work with her, and they've met with her a number of times, so that I can pass on.
Good.
Thank you, Councilwoman George. Anyone else? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero two dash seventeen. Ms. Alexander, if you call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item nine is Resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution, City of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, annexing thirty-one point three seven eight acre partial, tax map one thirty-five partial zero three two point oh one, located west of Woods Ferry Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Ferry Road into the City of Galton. Authorizing the annex property to be into a council district, repealing conflict of ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman George. Anyone with any discussion? Seeing none, this is Resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen. And Ms. Alexander, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen does pass unanimously, thank you. Item number ten is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash eight, and Councilman Overton is up again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the Summit, of City of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning two partials, sold in thirty-six point five nine eight acres from RR Rural Residential County to R forty Low Density Residential Districts to R eighty, R eight Medium Density Residential Plan Unit, Plan Residential Development District to Preliminary Master Development Plan for Woods Ferry Crossing located west of Woods Ferry Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Ferry Road. Authorizing revisions to be indicated on the official zoning analyst, repealing conflict of ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash eight, Ms. Alexander.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Okay, second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash eight does pass unanimously. Item eleven is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash eleven, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating a federal grant to the Police Department for fiscal year twenty Justice Mental Health Collaboration Program. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash eleven. Ms. Alexander, with the roll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
It does pass unanimously. Item twelve is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash twelve. Councilwoman Love, or did I just do this? I'm getting confused.
No.
No, you're right. You're going lower, you're right.
Thank you. This is an ordinance appropriating a federal grant to the Police Department for fiscal year twenty Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. I do think it bears mentioning, and I don't know if Chief Bandy would like to speak to this at all, but these two grants are a really big deal for serving our citizens. And I'm very proud of our Police Department and, and looking forward to them being able to implement this. Chief Bandy, I see you pop in there. You want to say anything about it? He says thumbs up, okay. Thumbs up, move along. It's been a long night. I get it. Anyone with any questions? Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. Alexander to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously, that second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash twelve. Okay, I'm going to take a second and ask this council, do you desire a short recess?
No.
No. Just go on.
Well, some of us may have to duck out here for a minute, and.
I agree.
Yeah, so we will move along and do the best we can, but.
Y'all just duck out.
I think we might.
Let's roll on.
And if I do, Vice Mayor Fennell, you jump in. Item number thirteen, the second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash thirteen, Councilman Fan is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred dollars for addition to fire station number three for EMS, porters and vehicle, and I so move.
Motion to approve by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash thirteen, Ms. Alexander.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash fourteen, Councilman Alexander.
Yes, this is an order appropriating twenty thousand one hundred and eight dollars and twenty-three cents from revenue received from insurance for damage to five, uh, fire station number three, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Alexander, if you'll call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven As, zero Nos.
Does pass unanimously. Item fifteen is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash fifteen, Councilwoman George.
And amendments, thank you, of the City of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Three, Planning Commission, Section Two dash one fifty-one, Creation and Membership, and Section Two dash one fifty-three, Additional Powers. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George. Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion, any questions? I see none. This is second reading on ordinance O two one zero two dash fifteen. Ms. Alexander, you can call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander. Was that a yes, Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Alain.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
Thank you. Item sixteen is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash sixteen. And for it, Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Galton, Sumter County, Tennessee, approving and amended master, preliminary master development plan for Winston Place on nineteen point eight four acre partial tax map one fourteen partial zero four six point oh two, located east of Highway one oh nine and south of Red River Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion. Anyone with any questions? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash sixteen. And Ms. Alexander will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
First reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash sixteen does pass unanimously. Item number seventeen is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash seventeen. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Sumter County, Tennessee, rezoning thirty-five point five nine plus or minus acres, consisting of twenty-six point sixteen plus or minus acres from the R fifteen medium density residential district to the R ten medium density planned residential development district and nine point four three plus or minus acres from the R fifteen medium density residential district to the PNC planned neighborhood commercial district with a plenim, plenim preliminary master development plan for the Harsh property located north of Cairo Road and south of Hartsfield Pike, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion on this? Anyone comments, questions?
All of our questions got answered at committee.
Yep.
This is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash seventeen. Ms. Alexander with the roll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item number eighteen is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash eighteen. Councilwoman Love, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading of an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning forty-four point seven nine plus or minus acres and an adjacent two point zero four plus or minus acre segment of an abandoned CSX railroad right of way from the rural residential district to R eight medium density residential planned residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for Bledsoe Springs and zoning a one point zero six plus or minus acre of abandoned CSX railroad from rural residential district to industrial restrictive district located north of Hartsfield Pike and east of Airport Road, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for any discussion.
I will say that I, I have had changed my mind about this after hearing the trip, the improvements being made to the, for the traffic on Hartsfield Pike. So.
Anyone else? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash eighteen. Ms. Alexander with the roll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
First reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash eighteen does pass unanimously. Item number nineteen is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash nineteen. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars sixty-eight cents on Miracle Park donations revenue fund to Miracle Park expense fund. With that, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash nineteen. Ms. Alexander.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
First reading on ordinance O two one zero three dash nineteen does pass unanimously. Item number twenty is Resolution R two one zero three dash twenty-five. Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, Revere and Hidden Creek. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion? Councilwoman George, do you have your hand raised or just your arm up?
Sorry.
It's okay. I don't like being at an auction when we're doing it this way. All right, anyone? Okay, this is Resolution R two one zero three dash twenty-five. Ms. Alexander with the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
Thank you. Resolution R two one zero three dash twenty-five passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one is Resolution R two one zero three dash twenty-six. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor's assigned contract with Scotty's contract for phase one of the police fire training facility. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Resolution R two one zero three dash twenty-six. Ms. Alexander, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I zero Nace.
Thank you. R two one zero three dash twenty-six does pass unanimously. We're now into item twenty-two. It's the final item on the agenda, but it, it could be a lengthy one. I don't know. But this is the appointment of the interim fire chief. And in speaking with Ms. Haime Colley today, the process is, is that I am to recommend someone and that the council then confirms or denies that recommendation or appointment. I guess it's an appointment. I did email to you all the resolution as it would read. I don't know that you've received it, so I'm going to read it to you. It says, "Resolution Appointing Interim Fire Chief and Setting Compensation Rate. Be it resolved by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee as follows. The mayor has appointed and council has confirmed blank as interim fire chief and shall receive compensation and compliance with Gallatin Municipal Code, Article Two, Division Two, Section Two dash forty-seven." For your information, that compensation per our code is for an employee in the department, it would be ten percent above their current salary or step one of that job, whichever is higher. And so we said that now therefore be it resolved by the city of Gallatin that blank shall receive compensation at the hourly rate of forty-two dot, forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents per hour, the starting rate of pay of fire chief. That's the assumption that that would be the greater amount. If we go a direction that's not the greater amount, we can adjust it accordingly. And then it says, "Be it further resolved by the city of Gallatin that said compensation shall cease from the interim duties or no longer performed as determined by the mayor or city council." Now with that, I do want to say a few things. I want you all to know that I did spend, or better than a couple of hours this weekend, meeting with the battalion chiefs, the captains, and a couple of the assistant chiefs from the fire department. Over the past months, I've heard from lots of people in the fire department. And right now, I am of the opinion that we need an interim chief who is not necessarily interested in becoming the permanent chief. And we need that interim chief to be someone who wants to come in, listen to our employees, assess the circumstances, the situations, the job responsibilities, the talents and skills of the people who are at the department to craft suggestions and to address immediate issues and to make hiring in the positions that are needed immediately. Right now, we have some assistant chiefs in place who are doing their duties. I did get a recommendation from our battalion chiefs. They discussed with me the value of an external candidate and the value of an internal candidate. And I personally feel that an internal candidate is very, very important for the morale of that department. There are some employees that think an external candidate would be better, but I think by and large, I've heard from most who said that they would prefer an internal candidate because we do have so many people at that department that do have good experience, that have the talent, the skills, and either have or working on the education to further their careers with our department. And so I want to value those people that have invested in our department. The recommendation I'm going to make to you is someone that I honestly don't know that well, but I know is someone who is respected, who has what I would describe as the countenance to help calm and soothe the department and generate enthusiasm and boost morale and help, help the department come together for the future. I believe he could be a great transition chief. I think he would do the things that I described needing to be done and would help a new chief step into that role when that time comes and does not have interest in that role himself, at least not at this time. And so I'm going to recommend to this council, and again, I make the recommendation, and you either affirm or, it's not a recommendation, I make the appointment and you either affirm or deny it. So my recommendation to you all is that we appoint Captain Ben West to that position. And you've received his letter of interest, which articulates his experience. So that is my, the appointment that I'm asking for you to affirm.
To Mayor, if we, if we don't agree with the appointment, do we just vote no? And then you're going to make another appointment? Is that the way it works, Susan?
Yes, we've never had that occur before. But that is my understanding is that what the, what the code says, if the mayor makes the appointment and it's subject to city council confirmation. So the mayor has made her appointment and now the city council will confirm or not confirm. They don't confirm, then the mayor would make another appointment. And I guess we would continue on until the council confirms someone.
And, and the recommendation that I'm making to you all is the first choice of the battalion chiefs. And I think you well know that our battalion chiefs represent a lot of experience in that department.
And Mayor, if I may, I did have Ms. Flood, who's our human resources director, look at our, the, for all of our internal candidates. And then it would have to be for any external candidate, the rate of pay, that forty-two point whatever that was in, that would be appropriate for anyone that is.
Perfect. Y'all were ahead of me. Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Council.
I'm sorry.
You need a, you need a motion?
No, I understand that Mr. West is not interested in the chief's job.
He is not at this point. Now, I'm not going to say somebody would never change their mind, but.
Okay.
Will, will he be, uh, will he have to be, uh, will he be attending mandatory meetings as well?
I'm sorry?
Will he have to do mandatory meeting?
Um, yeah, yeah, all of our department heads attend department head meetings and council meetings.
I know, I said, you missed, missed my question. I said, will he have to do mandatory meeting, mandatory?
What are you saying? What are you asking?
I don't understand your question.
Very simple. I just asked you, will he have to do mandatory meetings? What's so complicated about that?
Well, I mean, the answer would be yes, as.
Okay, that's all I want to know. That's all. Thank you.
Hallelujah.
Vice Mayor Fennell, did you want to say something?
I just said, call vote.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Alexander, I'm going to ask you to roll for the vote, please.
Hey, Mayor, I didn't get a first or a second.
I don't believe that there is one because this is my appointment and then they vote up or down.
Perfect. Vice Mayor Fennell.
Oh.
Councilman Alexander.
Oh.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Ooh, I don't know how to vote on this because I don't know these people or I don't know him. So can I abstain?
If that's your will.
Um, let me do that.
Abstain. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
I'm not sure what to do either, but because there's so much conflict in the station right now, I, I think I'm just going to say no for now.
Yes, ma'am. And Councilman Overton.
No.
That was a no vote, correct?
That's correct.
All right, Mayor, we have four no's, two yeses, and one abstention.
Well, because I, um, we'll go with the second recommendation. What, what happens, Ms. Haime Colley, if I don't make an appointment they approve?
You don't, you don't appoint them.
What is the question? If you make another appointment, they don't approve it, and then you don't. I mean, I guess you have the ability not to appoint anyone at this time. And we would just not have an interim fire chief. We don't have an interim public works different right now.
And, and I guess my point is too, is we're going to get started on this process pretty quick also, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. But I think it's very important that we have someone in that role that is working on some cohesion and some morale and some assessment and, and setting some things in order that have gotten astray.
Would you have your second choice?
The second choice would be one that the battalion chiefs communicated to me. Again, someone with the department, not with as much experience, but has been in the role as Assistant Chief of Administration for some time now. And that would be Scott Wickward.
My feeling just is that with, there's been so much confusion and discord that maybe somebody that's not actually in the fire department just to take the interim role and try to straighten out some hard feelings.
I agree there with you, Ms. Love.
I agree. But it's only, y'all got to realize it's only for a short period of time too. So he's not going to have much time to do anything like that.
Okay.
It's for a short period of time. The only external candidate that we have does not have qualifications that meet any of the people that applied internally. And I feel again that that is a real challenge to our. again, that that is a real challenge to our, our people who have stepped up and said they're willing to serve at our fire department.
We need to keep in mind, this is a temporary position, and I feel like we should support the mayor's choice, since it is temporal, temporary. I don't know who I would pick. I haven't interviewed any of them, but I think we're kicking the can down the road here.
Who was your second choice?
Would be Scott Woodward, our Assistant Chief of Operations. I mean, I'm sorry, of Administration.
We'll call the roll again. Let's go.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
No.
Councilman Alexander? Councilman Alexander?
I think he's gone.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Councilman Overton?
No.
Mayor, two ayes and four nays.
Thank you. I'm going to put forth the candidate that is the external candidate. The battalion chief said they would be open to an external candidate, and that would be their third choice. I do want to be clear that this can only be an interim position as the qualifications are, 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 are not there per resume, and so I'll put forth the name of Tracy Townsend. Ms. Alexander, you can go.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander? Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who this was.
His name is Tracy Townsend.
Oh, okay.
How do you vote, Ms. George?
Well, she probably didn't know him either. Do you?
Yeah, well, I do know him, uh, and, and his wife. Um, I don't know him as a fireman, but I, I feel really, I know that the fire department is having issues, is my biggest knowledge of everything, and having somebody that is not inside right now may be good to have somebody from the outside, and since it's going to be interim, maybe that, what's interim? How long is interim?
Till we hire a permanent.
Yes, and that's what the municipal code says, until the permanent is hired.
Okay, and that's, and that person knows that upfront?
Yeah.
Okay, that would vote yes. Councilman Hayes?
And Mayor, this is the one that's not qualified, correct?
I, I don't know how you can justify that when he's been a fireman for twenty-eight years in Metro Nashville, you're on training, training divisions and stuff.
But there's a, there's a difference between a fireman and being a fire chief.
Well, and, and, and I'm talking about qualifications for the position based on that role, and, and in comparison to the internal applicants that had, you know, different qualifications, particularly leadership. And, and so that, you know, that is my, that is my reluctance, and also the, you know, the, the, I do not want to do anything to further hurt this department as far as morale goes. I want to be able to help, you know, build the morale there, and I thought, think it's just acceptable not to give internal candidates the opportunity.
Okay, but this, I mean, this was your third choice, right?
This was the battalion chiefs. They were actually not specific about the person. They were specific about an external, it was basically first choice, second choice, and yes, we're okay also with an external candidate.
Okay, yes.
Not specific to the person.
Councilwoman Love? Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. We will move forward with that beginning tomorrow. That concludes the agenda and brings us now to other business. I did want to mention that next week at the work session, we will have on that, the public work superintendent position, and we'll start moving that through. I believe most of the interviews, or most of the council conducted interviews with the candidates today, and we should be ready to have a recommendation next week.
Normally, we do that the same night of our interviews, that we go ahead and hire one that night of it.
It hasn't, has not gone through work session. Ms. Hama Colly, do you have a comment on this?
Well, I was just going to say, you can discuss it next week, but you can't vote on it next week.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying usually we vote on them the night we have our interviews. That's what we've always done in the past.
Well, I think we had it moving forward. It had come through a work session previously before we had the interviews.
And I'm okay with it. I, I just, I just said, that's not what we typically do. Normally, we vote on the night we have our, our, our interviews, we vote on that night.
Well, we were, we didn't get it on the agenda because we were unsure as how the interviews were going to happen because they got delayed by a couple of things, largely the weather.
And I'm okay with it. I want to do that. I just-
I don't want to do it with it not being on the agenda. Ms. Hama Colly?
No, I just wanted to make clear that you can discuss it next week and move it on, but you cannot vote on it.
So it's actually going to be two weeks before, it's actually going to be two weeks before we have one. So can we not suspend the rules tonight and vote on it tonight, Susan?
Well, you can, but I'm not sure that you have a recommendation from the panel, which is required under your policy for department head hiring.
Normally, we have a recommendation the day of. We have our interviews. That's all I'm saying is, I mean, this is, this is not typical. Typically, they make a recommendation the day we do our interview, the hour that night. That's what we've done the last two, that's what we've done the last two, the last two of them.
Okay, I don't know who has their mic on, but it's very distracting with the noise that, that's coming over when people are trying to speak. Ms. Flood, I don't know if you have received the recommendation from the committee yet. Realize, Councilman Overton, there has been a bit of a crazy time with everything that's been going on in the city.
But I understand that we're going to be two weeks before we get a department head in place, because we can't vote on them next week at the next meeting, so it's going to be another week. So I just think, like you said, we need to get somebody in place for that department head, and I just think, you know, we've always done it this way, so I'm just asking why we're changing things now.
Well, like I said, it's not on the agenda because we weren't sure that we were going to be able to execute the interviews until the agenda was already in motion.
Okay. Has Ms. Flood on here? Did they make a recommendation today?
I am on here, but my camera is not working, but I'm here in City Hall, so.
Did they make a recommendation today to you?
Uh, they have a tied vote at this point.
Are they going to debate further and discuss further, or?
I don't think so.
So, it's up to us then to hire somebody. So, I, I just say we suspend the rules and let's do it tonight and get it over with. If they're not going to make any other recommendation to us, I say we suspend the rules and get it over with, and-
Ms. Hama Colly, do you have a feeling on this? You're muted.
I'm sorry, Susan.
That's okay. I don't have an opinion. You can suspend the rules and move forward. I, I know that there have been times when we've done department heads that the night of the interviews, we have made the recommendation. I think we've usually had it on the agenda those times. There's not a resolution, but you could suspend the rules. You'd have to vote to suspend the rules, and you would want to get the recommendation from Ms. Flood, from the panel, and then you would need to discuss, and you would have to just, you know, discuss salary and who you're going to hire.
Well, if that's the case, I'll suspend the rules and make the recommendation. We move on with it tonight?
I'm going to disagree with Jimmy on this one. I think we need to take a little time to think about this.
And I'm okay. I mean, for some people, like, I don't have a problem. I just want to do what we've always done, so.
I agree. I think we need to too. Wait a little, I mean, just wait till the next meeting to do that.
You going to interview him between now and the next meeting, Craig?
And you, you might ask Ms. Flood her recommendations since she's the HR director, and whether she thinks we should move forward tonight or not.
I'd like to hold off if all possible.
I would draw my motion. That's all I wanted to hear.
You went fishing, caught a fish, didn't you, Jimmy?
Change in the middle of the game.
Who's the, who's the two candidates that are left?
There's four. There's four candidates.
I thought they make a, they was divided between two.
No, the tie is what he's talking about, Jimmy.
Oh, 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 there's a tie. Okay, yeah. I don't guess you'll share that with us tonight, will you, Ms. Flood?
We have, we have narrowed it to two. That is correct, and they are, the panelists are viewing it as a tie, and those two that we are looking at is, uh, who we have currently in the role and is acting as, um, the, doing the superintendent duties, and that is Richard. And the other one that they looked at very closely is our former employee Buck.
Richard DePreece and Dwayne Rogers were the two who tied.
Yes.
I'm okay if we put this one off for a month. I don't care. I mean, they do a good job over there. We don't have any problems, so I'm fine with putting it off a month. That's what I want to do.
I just put it off.
Make the motion, we put it off.
We're going to put on the work session for next week, which was the plan, so. Okay, thank you. Other business items that I have this evening, I do have two road closures. One is for courthouse construction, and it does have the proper department head signatures on it. It says, "Per attached drawing, day, in March twenty-one to August of twenty-twenty-three." It says that they worked with Galton Engineering to ensure that the attached street closure application is complete. They met with representatives of First Baptist Church and Galton Library to walk them through the fencing plan and have confirmed their acceptance. I'm trying to, it looks like they're closing, they're not closing the street, they're closing part of the street, all the way around the lot where it will be constructed. Engineering, have you talked to them about this and have any input?
Yes, ma'am. What they're planning to do is to close down the, the parking areas, basically, in front of the, the proposed courthouse location on East Main Street, so they're not going to be in the lanes on, on East Main Street, but I think there's-
Sidewalks.
Maybe, yeah, maybe three parking spaces there that will go away for a little while. And the, the other closure is on Boyers, and it's one lane that will be closed. We'll leave the northbound lane open, but the southbound lane would be closed, and that would be closed for probably three years as they do this construction.
Motion to approve.
We do have detours set up for sidewalk or pedestrians, so there will be signage and, and all set up for folks to get around that construction while, while it is going on.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, I had a motion, actually had a motion from Councilman Overton, so Councilwoman George, I'm going to call yours the second, if that's okay. Okay, so motion second. Ms. Alexander, I'm going to ask you to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander? Go on. Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Okay, thank you. The other road closure is for April second of twenty-twenty-one. This is a request from First United Methodist Church. It's for a Good Friday service. It would be closed from eleven AM to one PM. I understand that they are working through T-Dot to get approvals, but they also need our approval, so it's closing West Main Street from South Water to South Foster. Signatures are in place.
What's with those times?
Eleven AM to one PM.
They do this every year, don't they?
I don't, you know, I don't recall them doing it the last several, but I remember they used to do it every year.
Do we need a motion? And I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Ms. Alexander, for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. It is approved. And then the final thing I have this evening is a bit of good news. I'm going to introduce or ask Zach Wilkinson, our former public work superintendent, to share a tidbit with you all because it was really exciting news, and I want him to share it with you because truly, it was his diligence that made the call happen in the first place, and then of course, several departments worked together to actually realize the success, but he pushed and pushed and pushed both at the federal level and the state level to let us be reconsidered for something that ultimately had a really good outcome, not necessarily for Public Works, but for the rest of the city, so.
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate you letting me announce this, but this started out as a CMI grant that is, I think it's around two million dollars when it was first awarded back in twenty-sixteen for some vehicle replacements. Through some, I guess, changes and some requirements that happened during the way, those funds were rescinded, not only ours, but every other municipality that had been awarded them. We're fortunate enough to get a chance to apply for them again, and this time we came out with the two projects that I think we discussed several months ago. One of them was Phase Two, the ICS grant, which is the signal communications upgrades. We were awarded one and a half million dollars for that project, which was a hundred percent grant-funded project, and also, we got three point six million dollars to go towards the lot for projects. So that was a total of five point one million federal, in federal funds to go towards those two projects, so.
Go build a new bridge and put a walking trail. Great job, Zach. We've been working on it a long, long time.
That is- Team effort.
Yeah, it really, I mean, kudos to engineering and Mr. McCord and Suzanne Gearhold and everybody that worked to put all this together, but, but yeah, we wouldn't, basically, they gave a second chance to all the communities that had had their funds rescinded. They called it a mini-call, and we just thought we could maybe have a chance, and so really, cool, awesome, big deal, but we, we were successful, so.
And we don't know exactly where it's going. We're widening the bridge in the first phase, but Zach and then we'll get into, Nick and then we'll get into more of that later, as far as where we'll go with it, but thank you all. I appreciate it. We've worked on it a long time.
And Zach will be gone.
Zach will sit me around. He ain't going nowhere.
So that's all I have for other business. I'd ask this council if they have any other business this evening. The Councilwoman George?
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for saying that public recognition should not single out members directly. I appreciate that. And the truth is, I am a Realtor, but I think every council member here has some background other than being a council member, whether it's in finance and, you know, insurance, whatever it is that we do, we do that independently. But I believe that my ability to discuss real estate in these meetings is helpful because of that background.
I believe that too.
I do not look at that as being a negative, and I certainly do not see that I should recuse myself on any level when anything comes up about real estate. If it was a personal situation that I was personally involved with, I can understand that, but something that related to real estate is not something I would recuse myself about. Also, just for the public's knowledge, typically, new construction has Realtors on site, so I do not personally go, garner anything additional at all from any of this. I am not in this, I'm not serving in this position for a personal reward or personal compensation. If anything, my business is not as effective because I'm in this role, because I spend a lot of time here, because I see this as being a very, of, of a lot of value. So, on those that are out there that do not see that, I'm sorry for you, but I am here because I have the right direction and wanting to help our city grow in the right direction, and there's nothing- And um there's nothing that I would do to compromise my integrity and on any level, and I would challenge anyone to uh show that as anything different, so I just want to make that clear. I also have a Facebook page out there that's, that does say that I'm a Congress, I mean, that I'm a Councilwoman in District Two, and I do post on there a lot about local information. I would post about what happens in real estate, but also about how to get a COVID vaccine. So I try to give out information that's helpful to the community, so I think that's something that is of value and I see that as valuable. So um if that's something that's a problem, maybe somebody should tell me about that, but uh I want to use my experience, my belief system and my ability to serve this city in a way that so is everyone, so I just wanted that to be clear.
Aline, I would like to say that uh I understand what you're saying, but also, Craig.
Now, let me, let me get real quick, please. Um, Ms. George, I want to say to you that I apologize to you. Um, I should not have let that, the comment thread or the, or, you know, that commenter go down that road. And um I just, you know, it's been a long time since we've had the issue with people calling individuals' names and I was trying to understand what was being said and then I was like, wait, wait, and then it was kind of hard to interrupt, so I apologize for even letting that happen to you. Um, and I do want to make the point that the person who held the seat in your district prior to you was also a Realtor. So I just wanted to say, I want to say that to you, so I apologize. Um, Vice Mayor Fennell, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I would just like to say, Aline, that when the city, we have a question about insurance, I go to Craig Hay, Councilman Hayes, because he's a uh knowledgeable in insurance. I mean, nobody else is really as far as elected, so that's why I look towards you as far as real estate.
Aline, you bring, you bring a lot to our council and I appreciate you, Aline. You bring a lot to our council.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Mayor, can I ask one question? I know it's been a long night, but can, can Nick give us an update on the lighting stuff downtown at the crosswalks? I've had five people this week ask me about that because we just had the Shamrock run and I've had five people ask me about it, so I just want to get a quick update on where we are. We're putting the lights up, taking down John D's Little Green Men that he loves so much.
That might be Zach more than Nick. I don't know.
Um, so the, the last we discussed it, we uh brought forth a cost estimate to put in the lighted crosswalks. Um, at that point, I think the director was given to look for some grant opportunities because it was a pretty hefty price tag. Up to this point, we hadn't been able to find anything. It is something um in the budget hearings that we're gonna bring up as a potential something for next, in next year's budget. So that, that's where we're at with it.
Didn't it approve an amount to be spent on, on them, ma'am?
I don't recall. I thought, um, I don't remember allocating funds. I was just certain that Zach had it covered in his budget.
I thought we'd already moved forward with it, so I don't know, but I thought we was already ordering them, so I thought we was already moving forward with it.
But I think he was trying to figure out how to pay for it and we haven't made the move to allocate the funds.
And I appreciate that, but I, okay, and I don't want to wait till July though to get this thing moving. Mayor, do you agree? I mean
Yeah, I don't mind.
I mean, we need to get this thing moving, so whatever we need to do, if we need to appropriate some money, whatever, Zach, I'm willing to put that on our agenda. Let's do that. I thought we was already on track to order them and everything else.
You know, I can uh, I can get it on the next work session to get ordinance to appropriate the money, like are you, you wanting to do the, the ones in front of the library, the ones in front of uh Swangies and the one in front of City Hall, or just?
I would think with them closing the sidewalk in front of the library at this point, are they closing that sidewalk, Nick?
They're closing the sidewalk just after the library, so if anybody's walking on the south side of Main Street and they want to, you know, go to First Baptist Church, for instance, they're gonna have to cross the street probably at that uh unsignalized crosswalk and, and go around so that may generate more crossing there.
So yes, that would include that one, I would say.
Okay. I'll get it on next week's work, work session.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Does anybody remember what it was gonna cost to do that? Approximately?
That guy.
I believe it was right at a hundred and six thousand for all three locations. Um, it was a big price tag and that's why we
How much was Little Green Man to replace?
Uh
How many man hours to replace them, Zach?
We actually did do the, run those numbers. Um they weren't that much, but uh I, I can get those figures again. I mean, I did put together an estimate of how much time we spent with them.
It was a lot, Steve, I promise you. I talked to the sign man today and he, he spends a lot of time on this thing.
The snow trucks were pretty rough on this
Yeah.
a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you. Anyone else with any other business this evening?
I just have one thing to check to be sure of. I, I, from, let's see, Zach, I believe what I was told today is that East Main, which is similar to driving on a, out in the app, outback right now, is going to set for repairs or milling at the end of this month.
Um, yes, I, and I, I am somewhat out of the loop on this, but I know
Uh-oh.
And it, and it was, the hope was that it would be done to where we could mill this spring and it, it's on the paving list, I know.
Yeah. I can rescue you. May need Mr. Kellogg here to, to provide a quick update, but it is on our paving list and we're ready to go with it, but uh with all the complications that um GPU had with their pipe bursting contractor, everything got setback. And I believe that they're, they're very close to being done and we, we've got it on our schedule. Um, Rogers Group and actually Jones Brothers, um, who's doing the milling for us, uh they're, they're supposed to be in Gallatin here within two weeks. Um, so if all is good from GPU side, then it'll be in the schedule for them to do that work there on Main Street.
Good. I feel like I get um asked about that five or six times a day and I've learned to be a pretty good obstacle course driver.
Ms. Love, we are completed with the work and I, I'll have the contractor come by tomorrow and try to smooth out some of the the divots in the, in the road.
Thank you. It's appreci- it would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anyone else with anything? All right. Thank you all for your patience this evening and hanging here for three hours now, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Public recognition.
God, I was eager to get out of here.
You know we'll get, you know we'll get hurt for that, Mayor.
You wouldn't want us to have a bathroom break. That's what's going on. Okay, sorry, public recognition on the gender-related items. That is the time of the meeting that we open um to the public again. You may comment on any items that were not on the evening's agenda. Um, we can't go back and talk about things that were on the agenda. We can talk about things that were not. So with that, um, I'll ask Mr. Henshaw to walk us through public recognition because it's been a few hours since we've done that and um if there's anyone that would like to speak.
Very good, Mayor. If anyone would, would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. If you were calling by cell phone, please do star nine, otherwise just otherwise, just click the raise your hand at the bottom of our screen. Ain't takers? I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone indicating they wish to speak either. I think that everybody was just spending the meeting like a long night too, so with that, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn and say good night.
Motion to adjourn.
And we are at the end of our agenda, so we may. So thank you all. Have a good night. Be safe going home and we will look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Take care, all.
Bye.